Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council for Tuesday, September 10th, 2024. This time we'll do a moment of silent prayer. Please join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. It is why I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's great to see a full house here tonight. We've got a lot of things on the agenda and always love when, or we have a lot of people in the audience. A couple of comments just to kick us off. First, I would just like to say congratulations to the Bristol Redevelopment and Housing Authority on the $500,000 grant they received from HUD this week. Yep. That was a huge announcement and we heard about it about 24 hours in advance or so, and so we, we had just enough time to, to get really excited about for the announcement. So I was happy to hear that. I know it's a competitive process and there were very few communities across the nation that actually get that. So for us to be selected for that is huge. So congratulations again to them. And I appreciate their hard work in writing a grant that was successful in that. As if you've ever written a grant or applied for a grant, it's not easy because everyone's applying. So congratulations to them. Next, also, I know this week we're getting geared up for Bristol Rhythm and Roots reunion and we're super excited every year when this comes to our city and music takes over our city. And we're just happy to host all the visitors that will come, see our businesses downtown and around, our hotels, everything full. And it's just a great opportunity to showcase what we have in Bristol. We will have a special visitor here on Friday night, so I hope that everyone will be here and be here for the kickoff and be around that State Street stage for the shows there around seven. So at this time, I'll open the floor to the other councilmen and see if you have any comments. And then also I'll make note that Councilmember Osborne is joining us by phone. Do we have him on yet? And Anthony, Councilmember Anthony Farnham will be joining us.
Well, I'd like to jump in and first say thank you to Madam Mayor and Councilman Farnham, who's not here yet. They, they went Friday and fed our Bearcat football team and our Bearcat cheerleaders. I took a bunch of pizzas, I fed them well, and they, they did pretty good from what it sounded like. So thank you for doing that. Also want to congratulate, and I see a family friend from Damascus here, so I'm gonna get in trouble right now. I want to congratulate the Virginia Middle School Bearcats for defeat, for defeating the Damascus Middle School Cavaliers. So, thank you. Don't tell mom. But I grew up in Damascus, so it's hard for me to say that. Not really. Congrats to our Bearcats. Good job, guys. And then also, I know we all have seen the news, it's been going around social media, we talked about it at our last meeting, but the French Magnolia is gonna be opening up on State Street. New restaurant, French cuisine, so that should be very good, very exciting. We look forward to seeing that. I think later in November is when things start rolling, so congrats to them.
And we're only a few weeks away from the Bristol races. A lot of people are also getting really excited for that. We get a lot of visitors in for that. Our businesses get a lot of additional traffic, which helps our city tax revenue, but it's also just a lot of fun for a week.
All right. Our city manager is also joining us tonight. Is he joining by phone? Yes. So Randy, can you hear us? And do you have any comments?
I do not.
Okay. We'll move into adoption of the agenda.
So I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented with two changes. After item D4, I'd like to add another item for the Buckle Up for Life proclamation. And then I would like to move item E1 after the new Buckle Up for Life proclamation, just to further it up in the, the agenda there for us.
Okay. So we have two changes to the agenda. A motion is made to move item, or add an item. So we'll have, add item five for the Buckle Up for Life proclamation. And then directly after that, move item E1 up to, it would become, I guess, D6.
Or that would be a new D7, I guess. So move E1?
Move E1 up under the Buckle Up for Life proclamation that we're adding, which would become D5. So that ordinance then would be moved to D6.
Okay.
Your request.
I guess that's just a structural thing.
Yes. Yeah. No changes other than we're adding, we're adding the item, adding the proclamation.
I have no problem with the adding the proclamation at all, so I will second that agenda.
All right. Tenille, please call the roll. Farnham?
Yeah.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Nave? Yes. All right. Moving into the first regular agenda item, presentation of police certification and the staff report will be by Chief Austin.
Mayor, City Council, City Managers. The Virginia Chiefs of Police strive to promote, to promote the professional development and highest standards of executives and management. Level personnel of law enforcement agencies throughout Virginia. With that mission in mind, the Law Enforcement Executive Certification Program encourages police executives to attain and maintain established benchmarks of accomplishments to achieve a recommended standard for police leadership throughout Virginia. Participation in this program is strictly volunteer. And those who seek to do the executive certification do so to demonstrate to their peers, supervisors, and their community that they have put in extra effort to develop themselves, not only as an experienced law enforcement professional, but also as a leader in their agency and their community. There's two types of certification. There's one for executive chiefs, which is for appointed chiefs, and then there's a command executive. It's for law enforcement command officers who serve as an executive, serve in an executive or upper management position. Applicants must meet all eligible requirements in this program for initial certification, which includes being a member of a, of the VACP, in good standing, tenure, formal education requirements, professional development training, and service on boards and committees. This certification is good for three years. A lot of this training that takes place is at the expense of the individual who seeks to join this program or become certified. I have here a certificate, or plaque, excuse me, says the Executive Board of Virginia Association of Chiefs of Police and Foundation has conferred upon Major Darrell E. Milligan the distinction of Certified Law Enforcement Command Executive fulfilling prescribed standards, upholding the VACP standards of conduct, and committing to ongoing professional development in law enforcement administration. If you would, please join in congratulating Major Darrell Milligan for becoming certified.
Congratulations, Major Milligan, on that awesome achievement. I know it was not easy to do and for the time and hard work you put into that. I'm glad we were able to recognize you. So thank you and congratulations again. All right. Next, I'd like to recognize the winners of the Southwest Virginia Tourism Awards. And this was something I wanted to add to the agenda. Back in August, the Southwest Virginia Tourism Awards were hosted in Withville. And they took submissions from all over Southwest Virginia. So that Knight County four-city footprint could submit their marketing campaigns, videos, just different things for marketing for these awards. And I was extremely happy to see Bristol won nine awards. That's huge. I have to give you a hand, because that's amazing. So out of that, five of those went to Explore Bristol for, in multiple categories. And of three of them went to the Birthplace of Country Music, Bristol Rhythm and Roots reunion campaigns across the board. And then one of them also went to the Sessions Hotel that's here in Bristol. And I will tell you, their, their campaigns were amazing. And if, you probably don't see a lot of them because we don't market to our own folks right here, right? The idea is to bring visitors in from all over into Virginia. So they are, they've done a fantastic job. I can't thank them enough for the work that they are doing. And it's certainly showing. Our visitor numbers are up. We have more people coming to the area than ever. And so I just wanted to recognize them. So we have tonight Matt Bolis and John Scott from Explore Bristol, if you all want to come up here. And then Leah Ross from the Birthplace of Country Music. And we also have Hank Colley? All right. And we're happy that you're here. They brought a few of their awards. Matt would have needed a dolly, and we'll come down there in just a second with you. Matt would have needed a dolly to roll them all in. He truly needed a dolly when it was over to get them out with the boxes. But congratulations again, and thank you for all that you all are doing for Bristol. All right. Next on the agenda, a proclamation to honor and recognize National Education and Family Literacy Week for September 15th, 15th through 21st. I'll get it out in a minute. The 15th through the 21st, 2024. And we have a proclamation for that. And I believe we have with us tonight Shannon Mutter. And I'll read the proclamation and then we'll have you come up and accept it and share any words if you would like to share anything with us, okay? A proclamation to honor and recognize National Adult Education and Family, Family Literacy Week for September 15th through the 21st, 2024. And while this proclamation is very long, and I would just want to say that's the, the highlight of it. And as a city, we are proclaiming that as our week, as National Educate, Adult Education and Family Literacy Week. So I'd like to ask Shannon if she would like to come up and share any additional information, and then we will present the proclamation to you.
Well, thank you, Jake and Madam Mayor, for getting that ready on such short notice this year. I wanted to start with Bristol doing a proclamation because we served over 500 students last year and about 100 of them were right here in Bristol. So Mount Rogers region is a very large region, as you know. So to, for 100 of those students to be served here in Bristol, I thought that was pretty significant. And we're very proud of that. And our partners, which are the Bristol Public Library, Bristol Housing Authority at the Envision Center, and Bristol Rehab. And tonight I also have Sharon Hutchinson, who was our instructor at the Envision Center. And I have two students from the Bristol Rehab class. I have Alex Parrish and Tabitha Brody. And I think they would join in me saying that what we do helps families because it helps our students meet their career goals and their educational goals. So they can either get a job to support their family or get a better job, to have a better life. And we hope that once we get finished with them in our program, that they stay right here in the area and serve our community. So we're very proud of our students and all of our instructors, and thank you for recognizing us.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for being here. So before we do a photo and we present it, I will ask for a council motion and second for the proclamation.
I move the passage of the proclamation to honor, recognize National Adult Education and Family Literacy Week.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any council discussion?
I, I better jump in here. Shannon, thank you for the work you do. Thank you for the team that you have here that, that do such a phenomenal job in our region, especially in our city. It sounds like you've done great work here. I was at the library last week. They were speaking very highly of the program, so thank you. It has a tremendous impact. Literacy is, is vital to today's society. So thank you for making sure that everybody has equal footing. We appreciate it.
Can you help Mayor read the proclamations? Seriously.
I don't mind to read them, if you would like, if you all would prefer, either way.
Seriously, though, your type of ministry has greatly helped our region. This area has historically had very poor literacy, which has led towards this area having high poverty. The, the main occupations have been factory where a lot of literacy hasn't been required, and it's led to a low standard of income, standard of living. Your type of organization over the past 100 years has lifted us up so that we have a much higher standard of living, much more comfortable lifestyle. We have, you could put, attribute a lot of things to infrastructure and utilities, but without having literacy and good jobs, you can't afford those things. So your organization and your types of benefits to our community have greatly improved our, our lifestyle in this area, and we are grateful.
Yep. I'll just add, thank you, Shannon, for the hard work that all of you all are doing. I think it's extremely important to have this program and have adult education and family literacy available to support local education initiatives. Also, I'll just add that we want to make sure that we celebrate the achievements of adult learners and educators. Not only this week, but always. So we appreciate the hard work that you put in to your, your job every day. It certainly, certainly doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you all. All right. With no further discussion, Tenille, please call the roll. Farnham? Farnham?
Yeah.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Nave? Yes. All right. I'll ask you all to join us up here. All right. Next on the list, proclamation to designate September 2024 as Drug-Free Pain Management Awareness Month. Staff report from Randy. Not sure if he's gonna give it.
I'm having technical difficulties. Hang on just a second.
Okay, that's.
September, I've got it. September 2024 has been designated as Drug-Free Pain Management Awareness Month. To highlight and promote alternative approaches to managing pain without the use of medication. This observance aims to educate the public about various non-pharmacological methods such as physical therapy, acupuncture, mindfulness, and lifestyle modifications that can effectively alleviate pain while minimizing the risk of tendencies and side effects associated with prescription drugs. By raising awareness and providing resources on these alternative strategies, Drug-Free Pain Management Awareness Month seeks to empower individuals with knowledge and options for a healthier and more balanced approach to pain management.
All right. Thank you. And we are looking for a council motion and second for the proclamation.
I move to accept the proclamation to designate September 2024 as Drug-Free Pain Management Awareness Month. Second.
All right. We have a motion, motion and a second. And we'll move into council discussions. I just wanted to say we are thrilled tonight that we have several chiropractors from the city here with us tonight. We have Dr. Brandon Gillanwater. Okay. Dr. Joseph Crum. Dr. Todd Muncy. Dr. Wiley Green. Dr. Samantha O'Kane. Dr. Brett O'Kane. And then Dr. Emmanuel Mornings. All right. We are so happy that all of you are here. And I have a proclamation, a copy of it for each of you. But before we go to that, I will ask Tenille to please call the roll. Farnham? Farnham?
Yeah.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
I'm paying attention. Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Nave? Yes. Yeah. We're having some technical difficulties a little bit tonight. We've got several members that are out sick. So, so I'm excited to present this proclamation to designate September 2024 as Drug-Free Pain Management Awareness Month. So congratulations to you all, and we would like to thank you for the work that you do in our community. At this time, I would like for all of you all to come forward, and I'll present you with the proclamation. Oh, okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is for the, let me find the next one, sorry. We've got a lot of proclamations. Y'all might be thankful I'm doing them by caption only tonight. Y'all might be thankful I'm doing them by caption only tonight. There's a lot. Okay, the next one is a proclamation designating Child Passenger Safety Week. And I believe we have here with us tonight, I know Margaret Fire Robin and who else is here? Samuel Jones. Yep, they're here tonight. And we are excited to present this proclamation for Child Passenger Safety Week in Bristol and name it as this day, September, or the week of, September 17th is Buckle Up For Life Day. We encourage all citizens to help reduce injuries and tragic loss of life by buckling up themselves and their children every trip, every time. So the actual week is, the proclamation week will be for the 15th through the 21st, and then the day will be September 17th for Buckle Up For Life Day. Do you like to add any comments?
Actually, I would. Margaret unfortunately had to leave, so thank you Mayor, Naev, and council members. Ten years ago, Buckle Up For Life came to Bristol, and at the time, the National Buckle Up For Life Program was ten years old. This year, the National Buckle Up For Life Program celebrates its twentieth birthday. Earlier this year, they celebrated the milestone of distributing 100,000 car seats, of which Appalachia Promise Alliance was part of. Our partnership with National Buckle Up For Life has been one of their along with the Appalachia Promise Alliance was recognized with their Endurance Award. Appalachia Promise Alliance through our Buckle Up For Life Program helped spearhead a couple of things in our region. We were the driving force behind what eventually led to Safe Kids Northeast Tennessee and Safe Kids Heart of Appalachia. At the request of the Virginia Department of Health, Appalachia Promise Alliance was asked to operate a safety seat check station for them. I am pleased to announce that I am keeping hours every third Friday of the month at the Invision Center at 104 Oakview Avenue, Bristol, Virginia 24201. On September 19th, with my colleagues from Ballot Health, we will be having a car seat check at the same location from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Other hours for the safety seat check station are by appointment only. Also, we have made the option of virtual car seats and checks available for those that do not have the time to go to a physical location to have their car seat checked. Please call 423-444-0622 for more information.
All right, great. Thank you for that information. So we are looking for a council motion and second.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution or the proclamation, excuse me, designating this month as Buckle Up For, or September 17th is Buckle Up For Life Day, and that week is Buckle Up For Life Week.
Yes, yeah.
Child Passenger Safety Week.
Yes.
Thank you. I didn't have notes in front of me on that one.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any council discussion?
I just want to say thank you for what you do. It's very important work. Over the weekend, I had the opportunity to put together the stroller and car seat for my new niece. I'm an uncle now, and it, just seeing what goes into that, seeing all the gadgets and gizmos, part of that, it just, it's very important. I'm going to send them your way to get checked out, just to make sure I did it right. So I appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, I'll just add, thank you for all that you do. And I'll tell you, when you go to buckle in a child in a safety seat, it's a whole thing. And I know that there's a proper procedure for that, and I've learned that from my children who tell me I put things in the wrong places, and it is important that they are buckled up correctly. So I think sharing that message, what you're doing is working and saving lives, and we appreciate all that you do. And thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, I ask you to join us up front. Let me, one other thing. Tenille, please call the roll. Getting excited.
Farnham.
Yeah.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Naev.
Yes. All right, congratulations. Getting a workout tonight. It's like the stair climber. Okay, next on the agenda, we are moving, let's see, this is where we're moving up. The ordinance, second reading, and ordinance approving and authorizing the sale of property owned by the City of Bristol, Virginia. And I believe we do have someone signed up for a public comment for this section. I will ask Mr. Lee Jones to come up and state your name and address, and you have three minutes. Welcome.
I can talk that fast. Lee Jones, I live at 489 Long Crescent. My driveway is Long Crescent, but the back of it that we use backs up to Washington Lee Drive. It's my bad that I wasn't aware of what's going on with the school property. I was not techni, I was technically challenged back when all this started, as far as when it was put up for bid and so forth. I wasn't aware of that. But be that as it may, it has gone through, and apparently of the five bids that were made, the only two that were taken were from a person that offered $300,000, $150,000 for each school. The only school I'm concerned about is Washington Lee because my property backs up to it. And I was supposed to have somebody here with me whose property is even closer to it, but I don't know if he's here or not. I haven't looked. Anyway, I kind of feel like this has been pushed through really fast. I don't know what the situation is as to why that's happening. It says here, maybe, I don't know if this is the place to get the answer that I'm looking for, but it says about the property is not for, is for non-mains tested. It says, "We do not believe this site would be best served for non-mains tested housing." I don't know what that means. I didn't look it up. But there's obviously, this is in the proposal given by the gentleman that's got tons of money that wants to buy these two properties for nothing. Washington Lee School is assessed on Bristol, Virginia Assessment Rolls for $4.5 million. The land that the school sits on is $155,000. That's not including anything else. He's getting this thing for a penny on the dollar, or penny on the hundred dollars. Now, the situation is, I understand that maybe a school's hard to sell, and maybe you've got to go when somebody's there. The other three bids were for zero. They wanted the city to give the school to whoever for whatever purpose, you know, for a non, untaxable, whatever. I'm concerned greatly about what's going to go back there. I know what it says, and I know what it says this person's going to do. I know what his reputation is for doing things, and he does them in a big way. And hopefully, at this point, if this is a done deal, I'm speaking to deaf ears here. If it's going to go through, it's going to go through, and I'm a, you know, I'm a small fish in a big pond. I can't do anything about it if that's the way it is. But it just seems to me like it's going through awfully fast. We didn't get a chance to talk about it, know about it, understand about it. I know that they're going to put in, it says here, multi-purpose housing or apartments, townhouses, condominiums, what have you. I don't know, there's five acres that parcel backs up to a whole lot of people. It's in the middle of a neighborhood. I grew up there. I'm almost 70 years old, and I ran through there when that school was a gleam in somebody's eye and played in that area. But I just don't quite follow the procedure that it allows for Mr. Eads to foregoes 14.1 in the city charter, whatever that is. I don't, I don't know what that does, in order for him to say, okay, we'll take it, or we'll take whatever. I know that's the only money we got, and that's better than sitting on it for five years and expecting something to happen, and somebody coming along and say, oh, well, I'll give you a million dollars for it. Well, that may never happen. So is it a, is it a thing of, this is the only bid we got, and we have to take it? I mean, if he'd have offered $100,000 for it, would we have had to take it? But I don't know what this foregoing, this 14.01 that gives him the authority to make the sale without anybody saying anything about it. I mean, you all okayed it. It says that in here, that you all okayed it. And I don't know what that is, whether you can answer that here, or you have to see me after the thing to tell me. I don't know. But those two things, I don't understand as to why this is going through. The means, the non-mains tested, but it says multifamily, and then it also says five-acre site would allow for multifamily dwellings, da-da-da, whatever. The condominiums and apartments and so forth and so on. Now, I assume when he puts in a plan for this, he'll have to propose a site plan and show exactly what he's going to do, and all that has to be approved by the city. In the retail, what kind of retail is he going to put in there? That's a neighborhood. Who wants retail in there?
Right. Mr. Jones, I'm sorry to cut you off.
That's okay. I understand. I told you I'm long-winded, but I.
We would love to, this is not a question and answer forum. However, we will follow up with you. I'm happy to answer and address all your questions. Because this has been a process, so.
I'm very concerned about this, and I only found out about it two days ago. So I apologize for the shortness and long-winded.
No, that's okay. We will follow up with you. Yep, thank you. All right, next, we will move into a staff report from Randy.
Madam Mayor and Council, the Department of Economic Development put out a request for information on three vacant schools, Washington Lee, Highland View, Stonewall Jackson, on March 21st, 2024. There were five proposals received by the June 28th, 2024 deadline. The requests for information were out for the public to view and to bid on for over three months. Section 14.01 that Mr. Jones is referencing requires the city council, by unanimous vote, to approve the sale of the property for economic development purposes without going through our normal procedures in regards to the sale of property. It does not allow the city manager or anyone else to make a sale unless council approves the sale. So tonight is the second reading of this ordinance, and we would be asking, or the staff is asking, does the council approve the ordinance that the, how, that Washington Lee and Stonewall Jackson would be sold to Old School 1 LLC and Old School 2 LLC for the price that was listed in their bid documents?
All right, thank you for that staff report. And I'm looking for a council motion and second for the second reading, full or by caption.
I move the second reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Council discussion.
A little bit disappointed that Mr. Jones left before he could get his answers, his questions answered. Bottom line of it is that we have been discussing this since, I think Mr. Eads said, March. It's been a public process. Perhaps we didn't discuss as much as we could have, but we did discuss it publicly. And ultimately, what it comes down to is, we promoted the proposal process multiple ways, on our own website, on state website, and some discussion here as well. And we only, we had a total of five proposals given to us, and only one for each school was, would actually put the properties back on the tax rolls and gave us anything for it at all. May not be as much as we wanted, but at least we're getting some out of it. And it's by somebody who has a demonstrated track record of doing what they say they're going to do. Concerning the question of the non-mains tested, that basically means that it is not affordable housing. It is regular, middle-class housing where the tenants have to pay their own way. In my opinion, we have a dire shortage of middle-class housing here, and they are working to put in additional middle-class housing here. So I see a lot, while I might have liked a lot more value out of the sale, I'm looking forward to what they're going to do because it's something that's desperately needed here.
Now, I'd like to just follow up on that. That Mr. Jones mentioned the four and a half million, that would have been very nice to get that in the offer. However, we know that this property is, it's in the middle of a neighborhood. We want to see something that fits the neighborhood well. I'm not an next-door neighbor, but I live around the corner from it, so it's, I understand the impact it could have if it's not done correctly. Knowing the folks that put in the bids, it does seem like they do a very good job at what they do. They care very much for the community. They want to make sure that they're doing something that the community wants and needs, and it's cohesive. So I appreciate, I do appreciate the concerns. I do wish there had been a few more bids, just to have options. However, with what we had, with the situation, we don't need to rush into things, but also, we saw VI sit there for how long and what's happened there. So I want to make sure that we're making smart decisions, but we're also moving forward, making sure things are getting done, making sure the housing needs in our city are being addressed. And I think, I think this does all of the above.
I'll also note that this is not the end of the public progress, process on this. That property is owned our one, single family. So for them to do what they're planning to do, it's going to have to come up for rezoning, which is another very public process. It will have its own public hearing. It will have its own two votes. It'll have its own votes before the Planning Commission as well. So Mr. Jones and everyone else associated with it will have another chance to see exactly what the proposal is and to make their voices heard again. And if it turns out not to be something good, we can still stop it from going forward.
Right, I won't echo all of your all's comments again, but I'll just say, you know, I'm glad that we have proposals to look at. We also had local investors, which was important to me, that we had someone local that is, you know, interested, wanting to see the well-being for this community and not someone from China or somewhere like what's happened with VI. At least the ones that have put this bid in on the property, on both of the properties, have come through many times. They've invested millions of dollars in our community, and they're looking at the best interest for this community. So we know we have a desperate need for housing, so thinking about housing going in, in that Washington Lee building, and as Councilmember Pollard mentioned, you know, middle-class housing and housing that people will have to pay their own way. I think we do need that type of housing as well. We need different types of housing, but we need that as well, and I think it fits in that neighborhood. So I'm excited about these offers. I think for also Stonewall Jackson, the idea that they have of putting a boutique hotel in there. We do know we have a hotel room deficit in our city, and we're going to need more rooms. And so we know how well the other two boutique hotels are doing that we have in downtown Bristol. So I think adding to that collection is, will be a good add. So I do think maybe we need to get the message out more of this process and how long we have spent on this process. It's not been overnight. It's not that we're trying to push it through quickly, anything. We've put it out on all the proper channels that we should have and got the word out through all the means that we're supposed to, but even more through, you know, not only social media, but ads and placing those opportunities out nationwide where people could bid on them. And so I was happy to see, we did have bids for money, and we got several bids that were zero amount. So thinking through that and seeing that it was a local investor wanting to give back and put into it to our community, I think they'll do the right thing, and I feel, I feel good about that. We didn't get any bids on Highland View, so we'll have to look at what's going to happen there, what we want to do, because the last thing I want is to have empty school buildings sitting around. And as the Vice Mayor said, we don't want another situation that we've got just up the hill on VI. We don't want to see it deteriorate. We want to see those buildings kept, and if they, if they are changed, at least built into something. So I think it's a positive move for our city. And we'll make sure we follow up with Mr. Jones and give him a clear understanding and any other residents out there that have questions about this process. We're very transparent on it, very public, and happy to explain. Um, we're very transparent on it, very public and happy to explain it.
I'd like to, to add one more thing too, just looking forward, um, as Mr. Pollard said, we do have good, a good, um, can't think of the word. It probably will go before the planning commission and-
Yes.
And come back to us on a, back and forth a little bit there. So I, I am committed, and I'm sure the rest of council will be, to, to making sure we share those dates, um, on our social medias wherever we can, but also, um, I wanna encourage folks to go to the city website. We have an agenda center that lists all, all the meeting agendas. I mean, it's not the most exciting thing. You might have more fun watching C-SPAN or something, but please go to our agenda center, keep up with what's going on, read through, peruse the agendas, and as you see a planning commission meeting agenda pop up, look for this item, because it, it should be coming up in the coming months. Not sure the timeline, but just be on the lookout. We'll try to share it as much as we can, but there's, there's no perfect way to get information out to every single person, so we just gotta try everything we can, and that's, that's one way to do it.
Yep, yep, very good.
Madam Mayor, can I jump in for just a quick second?
Sure.
Uh, I'll just say really quickly, and I have, uh, I'm proud of this work, I have a hard out, not the hours, it might be the last thing I vote on. Um, I will say that, you know, I think this is a, this is a very exciting project, two exciting projects for the city, and, you know, we, we appreciate the willingness to invest and, and the potential future investment, uh, on both of these, Bill Rinkson. Um, you know, it's kind of a trade-off, you know, getting a little money now for a big investment, hopefully, uh, in the future. And the, the other thing that's important to remember, you know, as soon as these are sold, even before the renovation, you know, the relocation and the, the changes are done, all of a sudden it's not taxable, you know, it has, what they're, tax assessed value is. So, you know, we're getting them on the, the act rates, uh, and we'll see those numbers only go up, uh, here, so, um, we're excited for this.
All right, thank you. All right. Yes, go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
If I have a quick thing? It, um, I've heard a lot of folks say, uh-
That was awkward.
... meeting, but I just wanna reiterate everything I heard on the phone, all the comments from everyone. I do agree with, uh, that this is a, a good project with local developers, and, um, I've had a few, uh, people reach out about the price, and they've said, uh, I'm out of breath because I ran, sorry. Um, you, you know, one person even said to me, you can't really buy a house for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars anymore. Me being in the real estate business, I, I thought, well, that's true, but it's, it's different than someone buying or selling a house, because the purchase price is one thing, but also to be able to have the, the access to whatever, ten million, twenty million dollars to do the project, it's, uh, it's important, and we don't want another VI college, uh, on our hands, so feel very confident about, about this vote and what'll happen to these properties.
All right, thank you, and glad you're here in person now. You can hear us better. All right, uh, with no further discussion, Tenille, please call the roll. Arnim.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes.
All right, reading of ordinance.
This one by caption only, is that correct? Ordinance twenty-four hyphen fourteen, is ordinance approving and authorizing the sale of property owned by the City of Bristol, Virginia.
All right, I'm looking for a council motion and second for adoption.
I move the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, Tenille, please call the roll. Arnim.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes.
All right, next item on the agenda is a supplemental appropriation of one million two hundred forty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars. Ask Ms. Bradlin to give the staff report.
Thank you. Mayor Nave and members of council, this agenda item is a supplemental appropriation in the amount of one million two hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars in the general fund to appropriate judicial circuit court clerk previously collected funds to allow for forfeiture refunds. This is a carryover item in the amount of fourteen thousand dollars. City sheriff, um, to appropriate unexpended grant funds received in, um, fiscal year twenty twenty-four. This also is a carryover item in the amount of five thousand dollars. To appropriate Clear Creek Golf Course anticipated revenue and expenditures for the upcoming membership drive in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars. Community development block grant funds to appro, the fund, I'm sorry, to appropriate CARES funding for the current fiscal year in the amount of thirty thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. And the school operating fund to appropriate additional state funding per the final state budget in the amount of one million one hundred and thirty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars, and staff does recommend that council approve this budget amendment as listed. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Looking for council motion and second.
I move the supplemental appropriation.
Second.
All right, any council discussion? All right, with no discussion, Tenille, please call the roll. Arnim.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes.
All right, next item on the agenda, a joint public hearing for the twenty twenty-four Bristol Comprehensive Plan. I will open the public hearing and ask, uh, Daniel Schu to come forward.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I now open the meeting.
All right. Um, I don't have anyone signed up for public comment, and I'll look to Jay Dietrich for staff report.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, members of council, planning commission. As you know, for the last twelve to fourteen months, the planning staff, the city, has been working with Quantum Consulting to update the city's comprehensive land use plan. Uh, fifteen hyphen two, or fifteen-two hyphen twenty-two thirty of the state code requires that the plan be reviewed at least once every five years. Um, fifteen-two hyphen twenty-two twenty-three requires all local planning commissions to recommend a comprehensive plan for the physical development of territory within its jurisdiction, and then requires the local governing body to adopt the plan. Prior to the recommendation and approval process, a joint public hearing between the planning commission and the city council shall be held. So, um, just to go over just a couple of quick dates, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Nate Baker with Quantum, just for a, a quick presentation. So, just recently, we had our final, uh, public information meeting, which was on August fifteenth. On August nineteenth, we presented the draft plan to the planning commission. Uh, on the twentieth, it was posted on the city website, that draft plan. On the twenty-sixth of August, city staff held a work session with the planning commission, where we took comments and suggestions, corrections, things like that, on what was in the draft plan. Those comments have been updated, have been taken by our consultant, updated in the plan, which has been updated on our website as of last Friday, September sixth. On August twenty-fourth and August thirty-first, an ad was run in the Bristol Herald Courier advertising the joint public hearing ad in accordance with state code. So I'll just go ahead and turn it over to, uh, to Nate right now, and he can go through some of the plan.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Nave and members of the council and members of the planning commission. It's great to be here with you this evening. My name is Nate Baker. I am the community planning consultant on this project, the Bristol Forward, um, Comprehensive Plan. Um, uh, so it's, it's a pleasure to be here with you all this evening. Just real quick, uh, what we're gonna talk about tonight, um, we've got the project progress, uh, a quick overview of what's actually in the document, gonna be very high level. The document is posted on the website, so I'd encourage everyone, um, if you haven't taken a look, go ahead and go on the website and look at the, the document. Here is the, um, project progress. Uh, we split it up into four different phases. Um, phase one was the plan for the plan research analysis. Then we went through an envisioning process where we held two community engagement touch points, both in person and online. We drafted the plan over the summer, uh, came back and confirmed the plan, um, here, here in, um, City Hall, and now we're going through the finalization process to adopt the plan. Um, plan is, it's a community plan, so it's about community engagement, it's community-driven, and it is, uh, built through community input. Um, we developed, uh, after the first, uh, round or two of community engagement, community inputs, themes that emerged based on things that we were hearing. There are always themes that come out of it. We hear the same things over and over. Um, I won't read all of these different bullet points, I think I've shared them with folks before, um, but they, they fell into these broad categories of quality of life, economic development, quality of place, and public health. Those were used to build out a vision and a vision framework, um, that was split out into these five different buckets, um, the five different chapters, land use, transportation, uh, economic development, government services, and then, and then public health. So as far as the actual document itself, um, we had some goals for what we wanted that document to look like. Uh, first, we wanted, again, this is a community plan, it's gonna be a community-driven process, it's gonna be a community-driven document. Um, as part of that, we wanna make the document user-friendly. A lot of documents can be very dense, they can have a lot of great information. We wanted a document specifically and intentionally to be one that anyone can pick up and understand, elected officials, members of the community, the development community, anyone, um, understands what's in the document. So readable, accessible, interesting, visual simple. Uh, we wanted to provide clear goal and policy direction. Again, we could, we could, uh, create a comprehensive plan that's dense, that has lots and lots of policies, but we wanted something that had a clear vision and clear direction on the direction that, that we heard from the community. Um, we want it to be innovative, we want it to provide evidence-based ideas, and so, uh, we want the document to be both visionary, but balancing visionary with something that can actually be implemented. So here's what's broadly speaking in the document. Again, if you wanna see the details, I encourage you to go to the website. Um, promoting community engagement and voices in decision-making, this is a theme that came out of it. Um, here's a picture from the first community engagement workshop that we held, but it is also, uh, implemented through policy in the comprehensive plan. This is a local democracy, uh, we have a electoral democracy, we also have democracy in engaging residents so that your voice is heard in, in community decision-making. Thinking about the quality of housing types and expanding the quality, expanding the kinds of housing that are available here, here in Bristol. So we have, uh, multifamily, we have single-family and townhomes and duplexes, those are common. Building more of those is gonna be important moving forward. There are also other kinds of housing that are, that are less frequently built, um, cottage courts, stacked duplexes, uh, live workspaces, um, and so, uh, broadening the lexicon of what housing looks like, um, in Bristol was something that, that we decided to do in the comprehensive plan. We wanna make sure that Bristol is capturing public benefits, uh, in new developments when they do come, so making sure that, uh, with every single site, with every single site plan, that the, um, development standards are modernized in, um, the zoning ordinance, and so when developers do come, invest in their property, um, and build on the property, that incrementally over time, you are also capturing those public benefits. What is that? Uh, parking, parking location, landscaping, urban design, all of the things that, that contribute from a single site plan to the broader community, we wanna make sure that we're capturing those, those benefits. Um, promoting, uh, multimodal options, we heard a lot about, and you can see on the right, one of the activities that we did through community engagement was asking people, how do you currently get to places today throughout Bristol, from your home to work, from work to go to the grocery store to daycare? How do you get there today, and how do you wish you were able to get there? Pretty much what we heard was, people wish they had more options, um, to be able to, to get around, whether it's walking or biking or, or taking transit. Um, promoting mixed-use placemaking and urban design, um, so we have in the plan, a very important piece of the plan is called the Future Land Use and Character Map. Uh, I think in the current plan, it's the Future Land Use Map. We wanna emphasize on top of land use that we're also thinking about character. What does it look like? What is the character of a neighborhood? What's the character of a corridor? Um, and so each of the different colors that you see on the map has a page within the comprehensive plan document that is tied to it. It provides, as you can see, a description, provides potential opportunities to think about, primary uses, secondary uses broadly, and then urban design characteristics, um, that, that highlight, uh, what kinds of development you wanna see, the orientation of buildings, the design of the buildings. Um, and so, as we can see here, I've provided four different examples of a more you, mixed-use kind of placemaking, urban design, the mixed-use character type, the casino district character type, the downtown character, and the community opportunity. And as you can see here, um, they are spread throughout, um, the city of Bristol, so thinking of Bristol less as a monocentric city and, and more as a polycentric city, uh, we have the casino district around the area where the casino is, by more, Morrison Boulevard, um, West State Street, downtown, of course, and then the falls, phase, phase five, the Linden Drive area and Old Airport Road. Thinking of these as potential, uh, we may think them as community, communities within the community of, of Bristol. Um, we also have, of course, these community opportunity areas, and, and this is where we're pulling out, extracting, um, these sites throughout the city of Bristol where there is, uh, historical value, where there are buildings that people cherish and care about, but where there isn't anything today. Um, and so we pulled those out, and we wanna emphasize through the plan document as, using the plan document as sort of a marketing tool, hey, we wanna message to the development community, to HUD, to other folks out there, these are areas that are very important to us, uh, that we want to see revitalized, uh, that we wanna see invested in, um, and there are also areas that we care about the existing buildings that are on the site and existing character and the way that it weaves into the fabric of our broader community. Uh, and so that is the idea behind the community opportunity areas, is let's ensure that we're marketing these areas, let's also make sure that there's flexibility in use and what's gonna be offered. Our, our minds are open, but we wanna make sure that we are, uh, revitalizing these, these places. Uh, historic preservation is obvious, obviously very important in the city of Bristol. You have, uh, incredible historic buildings and a historic fabric that contributes to the economic develop, development of, of the city and also in, in creating place, um, and creating a city that residents care about. So you have these historic districts, um, and the comprehensive plan calls for expanding the, uh, current historic overlay to the Virginia Hill and, and Euclid Avenue districts. Um, we also want to, uh, through the comprehensive plan, expand and enhance, um, public parks, sidewalks, trails, these were, these were common things that we heard from, uh, the community engagement process. Uh, we wanna grow and diversify, uh, economic opportunities and educational opportunities. Um, one of the action items is actually carried over from the last comprehensive plan, which is to create a economic development strategic plan, um, and this is, uh, something that we heard over and over was, uh, we want to en, ensure that we are creating a strong economy, a diverse economy, and a place where, that, that benefits, uh, the current residents of, uh, the city of Bristol. You also have a, uh, an, a housing needs assessment, has a lot of really good recommendations. Um, those recommendations fall under four different goals. Those are to decrease the number of vacant units and subcenter housing stock, to increase the number of workforce rentals targeting those who commute to Bristol for work, and employees from forthcoming major developments, to facilitate the development of housing for seniors through modification service programs, alternative approaches, to create internal mechanisms, uh, that promote and enable the development of needed housing types. And so we wanted to elevate, uh, and, and bring into the fold and into the conversation the housing needs assessment, and put that into and reference that directly into the comprehensive plan. Um, so we presented the document, according to the timeline that, um, Mr. Dietrich, um, stated earlier, we, uh, then went back and incorporated a lot of the comments that were provided by the planning commission. Um, some of those updates, not all of them, because there were a number, but some of the, the meaty ones were to enhance the, you know, put into implementation, an implementation action to enhance the development standards in the zoning ordinance, to revise future land uses, specifically on the, the Old Airport Road area. future land uses, specifically on the, the Old Airport Road area, to promote residential and mixed-use uses, to convert some of the industrial, and I'm calling it flus, future land use char, in-character area, areas to residential and mixed-use while still ensuring that we're protecting industrial shell buildings. Because we, it's important to make sure that we are protecting valuable industrial land when those economic development opportunities come, come in down the line. Expanding the casino district, we'd already created the casino district, but making sure that it was expanded both to the west and to the east along the city highway. And then, as I stated earlier, expanding the historic overlay to Virginia Hill and the Euclid Avenue districts. I've already repeated a couple of these, but this is just a snapshot in the, the last chapter is an appendix, so that it can be modified without having to go through the amendment process. And it's supposed to be helpful for, for staff. But it includes a key implementation actions. Here's just a snapshot of some of those actions, as I mentioned earlier. Updating the zoning subdivision regulations in order to align them with the comprehensive plan, modernizing those development standards, implementing those actions in the housing needs assessment, attracting developers for new development. That is through adaptive reuse of buildings and opportunity areas, making sure that we are diversifying the housing stock in Bristol, creating that economic development strategic plan, adopting and monitoring the public incentives framework, completing the design plans from Endota Trail, Urban Connector, and then expanding the historic overlay. So next, next steps, and put a little asterisk to this, we want to incorporate any additional updates that we hear, refinements, edits, make any corrections to the document. We just keep continuing to refine it until it's adopted. Then it'll go through Planning Commission, review, discussion, recommendation, and then come to City Council, and City Council will have an opportunity to view the document and/or view the document and, and adopt the document. So this is the potential next steps. It could, it could change in the coming, in the coming weeks. And that's my presentation, and I appreciate you again, having me. It's been a wonderful project to work on, and I'm looking forward to taking it through the adoption process.
All right, thank you very much for that. If you haven't had a chance to really thoroughly go through and review the plan, I will encourage you to go online and review it. And we're happy to, to listen to your feedback. And we appreciate all the time and work that our staff, that you all have put into it. It's been a process, and so we look forward to moving forward with it and getting, getting it adopted and something we can work with and move forward with in the future. All right, at this time, I will close the public hearing City Council, and I'll ask Mr. Shu to come forward.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'll close the meeting.
All right. All right, next item on the agenda, matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda items. And we have one person signed up, Reverend Jackie Knopflin.
Madam Mayor and City Council, City Manager and Staff. I'm Jackie Knopflin. I live at 21 MacArthur Circle. I am defined on that 143, changing my address. But I, I live at 143 MacArthur Circle in Virginia Hills. This wasn't what I was going to speak on, but listening to that comprehensive plan, I have been here for 100 years and have been through several beginnings of comprehensive plans. But this is the first one I've, I've heard and have been part of that is rather thorough and something that we can actually get voted on and then follow through on. Because I'd like to see a lot of that actually go into action. So that's what I wanted to say on that. On last night, I spoke at the school board meeting pertaining to, after the, Dr. Scott had mentioned what he, they were doing as far as keeping our schools safe, how they were going outside of this area, seeing what had happened to other schools and implementing it. Because it's inevitable that something, something may be headed in this direction. And so our community should be more guided towards a defense where when we see bullying or remarks or political atmosphere starting to happen, we as leaders and you as councilmen, my council members, I would expect that you would hold up a certain dignity and integrity to where you won't be part of that agitating atmosphere that's growing in this political system. On September 6, around about on Friday night, we were playing, Virginia High School was playing John S. Babel. Oh my gosh. I used to be a cheerleader, so I, I remember that. I was excited. My granddaughter was, first time she was in the band, I was going excited about it. And anytime I see any of you all out, I'm going to speak to you and say something funny. I saw Mr. Holmes out, not, not Mr. Holmes, but Mr. Pollard out, and he handed me a card. And he said, you're not going to like what's on the back of it. And I said, well, what is? He said, well, this is the schedule. I said, oh my goodness, that's what I needed was the schedule. I glanced on the back of it, and I saw the political party on, on the back of it. And, and I said, well, listen, you know, I always say this, I don't care who you vote for, as long as you vote. A lot of people die for all of us to be able to have that privilege to vote. It doesn't matter what political party that you are and pushing and things of that nature. Just don't use my school on the front of the school schedule. Don't use that to have people that's moving here in this area to, to think and believe that this is how our system is headed on one-sided party. On, as, as council member, I know my time is out, but on, as council members, don't, don't put yourself in the position to where you don't represent me as well. In, in other words, we all know what our parties and things may be, but don't put yourselves in the position, Mr. Pollard, to where you don't look like you're representing me as well. And when you did that, and I looked on the back of it, and then two students said something about it. Other parents came to you and said things about it too, when they realized what it was. The school board said that they did not endorse, that fine writing down there at the bottom, said that they did not endorse no political party, and there's a policy against that. Well, I'm one of the staff members and so forth, so they're not going to endorse me, you know, because I wouldn't present that to them. I would never have used something like this, my Virginia High School, and then put a political party on the back of it. And so I wanted to say that to the council. We've got to be careful how we handle this political system that we're getting ready to range into in less than 50 days. It, it's, it's going to get projected, it, it may be rough. But we don't need to add to it as leaders in this city. And that's what I wanted to say. And I wanted to say it to you, Mr. Pollard. And I don't really want to hear a response back. I just wanted you to know that I did appreciate that.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Looking for a motion and a second?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Tenille, please call the roll. Barnum.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne. He might have popped off. Oh, Pollard.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes.
Next item, I'm looking for a motion and a second to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All right, Tenille, please call the roll. Barnum.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes.
We stand adjourned.